Good evening. Good evening. This is the 31st meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Internet Burton of Changing Lives Ministries of Baltimore. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, first we want to thank you for blessing us with favor to arise this morning. Word says this is the day the Lord has made, and I will rejoice and be glad in it. God, we come to you now and asking you to bless our city council president, our vice president, and every member of the Baltimore City Council. We act that you would favor this session on this evening. God, we act that you would bless the vision in tonight's agenda. Allow the spirit of unity, harmony, love, and peace to abound in this room on tonight, even though we're all individuals, bind us together to facilitate a greater cause for Baltimore. God, we thank you for every leader that supports and present vision and leadership for Baltimore. Heavenly Father, we ask that you would allow this evening's session to be productive, thought-provoking, fulfilling, and meaningful. We act that you would allow your hand to rest in this room tonight. Direct our thoughts, actions, and comments. As we close this invocation, we want to thank you in advance for honoring our request. We will be careful to give you thanks and praise for the great things that will be accomplished on tonight. In the name of God, we pray, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pass it on. We want to thank Pastor Burton for the invocation. The clerk will call the roles of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Mr. Charles Culver, Senior of New Vision House of Hope as our guest this evening.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, everyone. Just want to share a little bit about what New Vision House of Hope Supportive Housing Program is and what we do. And also, to my left here, I brought on one of my colleagues with us, Ms. Tammy Elliott, who would talk also a little bit and brief about some of the other services that we provide. So, New Vision House of Hope is a supportive housing program. We provide services to veterans, those who are homeless, as well as those who have suffered from the disease of addiction. For the last 16 years, we've been in this city here. We've served over 1,000 clients through our transitional housing program. Just this year, this last past fiscal year, we've served over 1,100, 1,200 men and women in our emergency overflow shelter. We've been around, like I say, for about 16 years. We look forward to supporting the council, President Young, and all the others that are councilmen that are here. Whatever we can do to help you guys out, that's what we're here for. Again, I'm going to let Ms. Tammy Elliott just share a little bit about what the services that we do have and close off from there.
Good evening. My name's Tammy Elliott. I'm the program administrator for New Vision House of Hope's outpatient substance abuse treatment program. The outpatient treatment program started in January of 2015, and since that time, we have served approximately 450 individuals with substance use disorders from Baltimore City and surrounding areas. We offer both standard outpatient and intensive outpatient substance abuse treatment. We utilize an evidence-based practice curriculum. We also have partnered with providers in the community. We offer our clients group and individual psychotherapy services, and we also have a psychiatric rehabilitation program on our site, as well as toxicology screening that we do for our clients. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Culver.
So, in closing, just want to share a mission statement with you. New Vision House of Hope Incorporated is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that provides housing services, supportive services, health education to empower, strengthen persons in recovery, living with HIV, newly released from incarceration, as well as veterans and community at large. As I look around the room at some of the council people, almost 20 years ago, I sat here working in the office next door with one of the former city council members, and now I see some of the other folks that I work with, and I'm so proud of them and want to thank you guys for all the work that you've done and that you are doing. Again, we're here. All the council people have our brochure and our packages. Please, just give us a call. Let us know if we can do, you know, any service for you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. It is the Council of Customs to generalize the invocation, act for motion, generalize the prayer, generalized by Vice President Middleton, seconded by Councilman Stokes. All of the favors generalize the invocation, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have, the motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the March 26 City Council Meeting is on council members' desks.
Their motion to approve the journal. Motion by Councilman Pinkett, seconded by Councilman Schleifer. All of the favors adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, the journal is adopted. Executive nomination.
EA-18-0143, John E. Beasley, Member Employees Retirement System, Board of Trustees.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA-18-0144, Nadine M. Finnegan Carr, Member Community Relations Commission, District 14.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bill to be introduced.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 18-0215, Maryland Department of Transportation, County Transportation Revenue Bonds Series 2018, for the purpose of authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore, the city, to enter into an agreement with the Maryland Department of Transportation in connection with the participation by the city in the proceeds derived from the sale of certain bonds to be known as Department of Transportation of Maryland County Transportation Revenue Bonds Series 2018, or as otherwise designated by the Secretary of Transportation and to be issued pursuant to Title III, Subtitle V of the Transportation Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended, authorizing certain officials of the city to make certain actions in connection with the city's participation in the proceeds of the sale of such bonds, providing for the pledge of the city's share of highway user revenues to the payment of such bonds, providing that neither the faith and credit nor the taxing power of the city shall be pledged to the city's payment obligations under the participation agreement identified herein, providing for the severability of the provisions of this resolution, providing that this resolution shall be liberally construed and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0216, City Property Renaming Ambrose Kennedy Park to Henrietta Lacks Educational Park, for the purpose of changing the name of Ambrose Kennedy Park, located at 1002 Hallford Road to Henrietta Lacks Educational Park. Sponsored, Stokes, President Young, Henry, Dorsey, Bullock, Burnett, Pinkett, Schleifer, Reisinger, Clark, Cohen, Middleton.
Chair of нас, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The St. Ambrose House Playground there had a grant and they redoing the park at $300,000, and I was very successful to have a meeting with the Henrietta Lacks Legacy Group. Johnson Square Elementary School, rebuild Johnson Square, and rebuild Metro. I'm real excited about this naming this park after Henrietta Lacks. And the idea is because we have a school which is located in the rear. We have the trove homes where young people live, so we wanted to make sure we have some space there on the park to teach our young people not just about Henrietta Lacks, but other African-Americans who made a difference in this city. So, I want to thank my colleagues for their support.
Okay. Please note that Councilman Scott is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0217, Zoning Condition to Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 zoning district, 1823 West Baltimore Street. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 1823 West Baltimore Street, Block 0208, Lot 012, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, sponsored by Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0218, Zoning Condition to Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 zoning district, variances 807 North Monroe Street. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 807 North Monroe Street, Block 0084, Lot 046, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, and granting variances from certain bulk gross floor area, gross floor area per unit type, and off-street parking regulations. Sponsored by Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0219, City Property Renaming the Fire Station Located at 5714 Eastern Avenue to be the Constantine Previs Fire Station. For the purpose of naming the fire station located at 5714 Eastern Avenue to be the Constantine Previs Fire Station. Sponsored by Cohen, President Young, Scott, Schleifer.
Chair of нас, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is introduced at the request of George Collins, President and founder of the African-American Firefighters Historical Society and supported by the Bayview Community Association. Constantine Previs was a World War II veteran, an attorney, a leader in Baltimore's Greek community, and a member of Baltimore City's Board of Fire Commissioners. In 1968, Commissioner Previs cast the deciding vote to end segregation in some of Baltimore's firehouses. Commissioner Previs worked alongside Reverend Marion Bascom, Baltimore's first black fire commissioner, to promote impartiality and equality for all members of the Baltimore City Fire Department. And, Mr. President, at a time when our city and our nation is grappling with its history, particularly when we are tearing down monuments to Confederate traitors, it's important that we also lift up those who were on the forefront of racial equity. And so, I'm proud to be a part of honoring Mr. Previs, who made his mark on our history here in Baltimore, and I thank you for your support.
This has been assigned to Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0220, Repeal of Uplands Renewal Area and Plan, for the purpose of repealing Ordinance 04-887 as amended by Ordinance 08-99, which established the Uplands Renewal Area and Plan and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by Burnett.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0221, Recordation and Transfer Taxes, Surtax Dedicating Surtax Proceeds to Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the purpose of imposing a surtax on recordation subject to the recordation tax and a surtax on property transfers subject to the transfer tax, providing for an exemption from these surtaxes from certain residential properties, dedicating the proceeds from these surtaxes to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund created by City Charter Article 1, Section 14, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related language and generally relating to the city's recordation and transfer taxes. Sponsored by Bullock, President Young, Henry, Dorsey, Burnett, Scott, Sneed, Clark, Stokes, Middleton, Cohen, Reisinger.
Chair of нас, Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Council President. Just really want to thank you for your support, as well as the support of our colleagues. You know, this act is some of called Fund the Trust Act. We find this to be very important because we know that, two years ago, the Baltimore City voters overwhelmingly supported an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We've yet to put significant resources into it. Now, we've had some commitment from the mayor's office, but as a council, we believe it's important that we put our money where our mouth is. It's also important for us to recognize that this applies to non-owner occupied properties. So, this is not for the average homeowner. This is for non-owner occupied properties. Again, I look forward to having further discussion around this in the Taxation and Finance Committee. But again, thank you for all the supporters. Thank you for the supporters who came out today for this important piece of legislation. This is only the first step on a long journey toward affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. I didn't hear you. Oh, yeah, okay. Please note that Councilman Costello as a co-sponsor. And Councilman Pinkett. You too, Councilman Schleifer. Okay. Please note those three as our co-sponsors.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 18-0222, Charter Amendment Equity Assistance Fund, for the purpose of authorizing the establishment of a continuing, non-lapsing equity assistance fund to be used exclusively to assist efforts that reduce inequity based on race, gender, or economic status in Baltimore, requiring that the annual ordinance of estimates include a specified appropriation for the equity assistance fund and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsored by Scott, Henry, Dorsey, Bullock, Burnett, Sneed, Middleton, Stokes, Clark.
Chair of нас, Chairman Scott.
Mr. President.
You have to stand up, Council.
Mr. President, I'll just reserve my remarks until after the next bill is read.
Okay. This has been assigned to Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0223, Equity Assessment Program, for the purpose of providing for the implementation of an equity assessment program for Baltimore City to be developed and overseen by the Department of Planning, requiring city agencies to access existing and proposed policies and practices for desperate outcomes based on race, gender, or income, and to proactively develop policies, practices, and investments to prevent and redress those desperate outcomes, defining certain terms, providing for the adoption of rules and regulations to carry out this program, requiring certain notices and reports, and generally relating to the goal of eliminating structural and institutional racism and other forms of discrimination based on immutable characteristics. Sponsored by Scott, Sneed, Henry, President Young, Dorsey, Bullock, Burnett, Pinkett, Schleifer, Cohen, Middleton, Reisinger, Stokes, Clark.
Please note Chairman Costello is a co-sponsor. Chair, on both of them? Okay. Chair of нас, Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. If the chairman would like to co-sponsor both, we definitely will not, we're not stopping him from doing that. Mr. President, members of the council, first, let me thank all of my co-sponsors for your support. Mr. President, as was mentioned earlier, we just recently recognized the 50th anniversary of the death of Dr. King, and while many folks remember the quotes about "I have a dream" and other things like that, today, I am drawing back to one of my favorite Dr. King quotes, and it's very simple. "I think that the biggest problem now is that we got our gains over the last 12 years at bargain rates." That's a quote from Dr. King near the end of his life. Baltimore has a rich history, colleagues and citizens of Baltimore, in many different areas: politics, civil rights, sports. But there's something else that we don't like to talk about that's a very storied history in our city, and that's inequity and racial inequity to be front. But, we have ignored that for far too long. Charm City has a deep history of being inequitable to its own citizens. Baltimore must seriously begin to attack the inequities that exist within it, and that should start within our own government. Our government played a significant role in creating the inequitable city that we all live in today. We have streets named after former mayors, like Mayor Preston, who led the way into making sure that our city was hyper segregated and that people that look like me and the other people were not valued just as others in the city of Baltimore. Cities across the country have begun focusing on bringing increased equity to their city. Baltimore is a much better place than it was when I was born in 1984 and when I was a young kid growing up here in Baltimore in the 90s, but we still have light years of work to do to make Baltimore the best Baltimore it can be. We can and should be a leader in equity, not just by making sure that all of our agencies and all of our policy and everything that we do as a city is done through a lens of equity, but also earmarking funding to tackle those issues head-on because we know nothing is going to move without dollars in the city of Baltimore. Now, this will not end inequity of any kind in the city of Baltimore. However, it will mark that finally, the city of Baltimore is serious about making sure that everyone in the city of Baltimore, everyone that calls Baltimore home, is treated fairly and in an equitable manner, no matter they're black, gay, straight, woman, poor, or rich. So, thank you for your support thus far, colleagues, and I look forward to having a robust discussion about how we can do something landmark, groundbreaking to improve the lives of all Baltimoreans. Thank you.
This has been assigned, this has been assigned to Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolutions introduced.
City Council Resolution 18-0077R, Supporting Public Workers' Right to Organize, for the purpose of supporting the freedom of all city employees to exercise their rights to a voice and dignity on the job through joining together in strong unions and urging the Supreme Court to consider the legacy of Dr. King, the Memphis sanitation workers, and the public benefit created by workers organizing and rendering its decision in this upcoming Janus versus Asme case. Sponsored by Sneed, Henry, President Young, Dorsey, Bullock, Burnett, Pinkett, Scott, Schleifer, Reisinger, Clark, Stokes, Cohen.
Chair of нас, Chairwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President. I would just like to move to suspend the rules to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All of the favors suspended rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, the rules are suspended. Chair of нас, Chairwoman Sneed.
Thank you. The Janus versus Asme case, which is currently before the Supreme Court, could devastate public employee unions by getting their ability to collect fees from the workers they represent. Unions have been a path to the middle class for black people, and we don't want the Supreme Court decision to stop this. And this is why I would like to move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All of the favors suspended rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, the rules are suspended. Chair of нас, Chairwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to move this resolution favorably.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All of the favors adopting the resolution 18-0077R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, this resolution is adopted. You can find the Consent Council in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there motion to approve the Consent Council? Moved by Councilman Scott, seconded by Councilman Burnett. All of the favors approving the Consent Council, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, this Council is approved. Chair of нас, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move to extend floor privileges to my special guests.
Seconded by Councilman Scott. All of the favors of allowing floor privileges to Council Vice President Middleton's guests, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most curious guests may take the floor.
And as she's coming up, I just want to first mention that many of you know that I attended the movement in Memphis and the beginning of April, not just to mark the 50th year history of MLK, but to continue to learn ways to inspire, mentor, and educate, and work cooperatively with our future generations and our own surrounding on eradicating racism and poverty peacefully that is still prevalent right here in Baltimore. And I noticed some of the resolutions and bills that were introduced today also was part of that initiative. We all know that this is the year of the woman, and strong women lift each other. I wanted to do this special honor during Women's History Month, but today worked out to be the best time now that this state legislative session is over. And so, I wanted to honor this special guest, Donna S. Edwards, which has been a trailblazer and pioneer for women during her 40 years of union and community activism. Donna is the first woman to be elected president of the Maryland State and DC AFL-CIO. And, thank you. And we all know how hard it is and was for her to get to that point. She was also the first woman elected as Secretary-Treasurer of the State Federation. She has driven legislative programs of the State Federation, pushing several successive, successful legislative campaigns and passing numerous bills that have been beneficial to workers and our unions. Sister Edwards was president of ASME Council 92, which is Council 3, and has been the president of ASME Local 112, the statewide 4100-member Department of Human Resources Union. She led thousands of state and university employees to victory for the right to collective bargaining, that's with the universities and colleges. So, that was another very, and in the state. So, that was another very powerful thing. President Edwards was a social worker, strategic planner, and administrator for the Baltimore City Department of Social Services. She continues to educate and advocate on behalf of all working families and low-income families with humility and integrity. President Edwards received her Bachelor's of Social Work and her Master's of Social Work from the University of Maryland and attended the Harvard University Kennedy School, completing her Labor Relations Program. And she serves on numerous governors committees and task force and legislative commissions. To our long, to my long-life family, friend, mentor, and community activists, we present to you in solidarity a resolution for one. And before I do that, and when I present this, there are some, also some other very important people that came here today to celebrate with you. And I'd like those folks to also stand, and you can come up on the floor as well, correct, Mr. President? Okay. And that's the Baltimore Metro new president of the AFL-CIO, Jermaine Jones. Come on up. And president of the Baltimore Teachers Union and the International Vice President of, come on up. AFT, Margarita, I'm sorry, Marietta English. And President Michael Smith of the Postal Workers. And ASME Director and President Glenn Middleton and Political Director of ASME Council 67, Richard Parker. You want to come on up as well? And I can read this framed citation from the City Council of Baltimore Resolution, "Be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Donna S. Edwards in recognition of becoming the first female president of the Metropolitan Washington Council AFL-CIO. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on the 16th day of April 2018, signed by President Bernard C. Jack Young and all members." And thank you so much. And also, and also the, also our mayor would have loved to have been here, but she wanted to give you this keepsake of one of her poetry emotion books called Mind Garden, where thoughts grow, and this will help to keep you moving along. And it's, it's a...
Something to read.
Thank you all. And thank you all for coming.
Thank you, and congratulations again. We will now move the bills on second reader, Executive Appointments Committee.
EA-18-0132, Aaron Bryan, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 6.
Chair of нас, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held hearings on April the 4th and 11th. I move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Council Vice President Middleton. All of the favors confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA-18-0133, James French, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 6.
Chair of нас, Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Vice President Middleton. All of the favors confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA-18-0135, Thomas Leibel, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 11.
Chair of нас, Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Chairman Costello. All of the favors confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA-18-0136, Matthew Mosca, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 14.
Chair of нас, Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All of the favors confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA-18-0137, Elizabeth Nix, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 9.
Chair of нас, Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Chairman Bullock. All of the favors confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA-18-0138, Laura Penza, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 4.
Chair of нас, Chairman Stokes.
Move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All of the favors confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA-18-0139, Anna Ranon, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 5.
Chair of нас, Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Councilman Schleifer. All of the favors confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA-18-0140, Monica Rhodes, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 1.
Chair of нас, Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Chairman Coleman, I mean, Cohens. All those in favor... All in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 18-0141, LJ Carter, Member Commission on Aging and Retirement Education, District 12.
Chair of the House, Chairman Stuckes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Snead. All in favor, Chairman, Chairman Snead. All in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 18-0142, Lee Michaels, Member Commission on Aging and Retirement Education.
Chair of the House, Chairman Stuckes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Education and Youth Committee.
City Council Resolution 18-0072-R, supporting College Bound expansion for the purpose of calling on all stakeholders, including the city of Baltimore, the state of Maryland, Baltimore's business, and foundation communities, and individuals to join together to support college education as a positive and achievable goal for a majority of our school system's high school students and their families by providing the 1.3 million required for college bounds expansion to 233 high schools in fiscal year 2019, and pledging the same amount each year for continuity through fiscal year 2022.
Chair of the House, Chairman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing in the Education Youth Committee. I want to thank my vice chairwoman, Mary Pat Clark, who has done yeoman's work organizing with College Bound. There was resounding support for really a program that has changed lives, including one of our colleagues on the council, Councilman Scott, who came and talked about his own story and his coming up with College Bound, and what an impact they've had on him. This is a great program, and we, as a committee and as a council, want to fight to make sure it is in the budget and that every kid in our city has access to a College Bound counselor. Move the resolution.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All in favor of approving this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the resolution is adopted. Housing, please note that Councilman Scott is saying, Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0183, Urban Renewal, Coldstream Homestead-Montebello Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Coldstream Homestead-Montebello to modify the list of uses prohibited in the urban renewal area, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date.
Chair of the House, Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on April 10th, 2008. There is a technical amendment on your desks. I move the amendment favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill is amended. Chair of the House, Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill moves to third reader. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0106, Res zoning 3601 through 3605 Park Heights Avenue, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 3601 through 3605 Park Heights Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the R6 zoning district to the C1 zoning district.
Chair of the House, Chairman Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Vice President Middleton. All in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the finding of facts are adopted. Chair of the House, Chairman Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Vice President Middleton. All in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0114, Zoning Condition to Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District Variance is 2938 Huntington Avenue. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on a property known as 2938 Huntington Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque, and granting variances from certain lot area size, lot area coverage, off-street parking, and gross-floor area requirements.
Chair of the House, Chairman Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the finding of facts are adopted. Chair of the House, Chairman Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Chairman Stokes. All in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill moves to third reader. Chair of the House, Chairman Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move to invoke Council Rule 12-1 to move City Council Bill 17-114 to third reader at the same meeting.
Second by Vice President Middleton. Roll call.
President Young, Cohen, President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
The motion carries, and Bill 17-0114 is on third reader. Third reader requires invocation of Rule 12-1 for same-day advancements.
City Council Bill 17-0114, Zoning Condition to Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District Variance is 2938 Huntington Avenue. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on a property known as 2938 Huntington Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque, and granting variances from certain lot area size, lot area coverage, off-street parking, and gross-floor area requirements. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 17-0079, Res zoning 2300 Edison Avenue, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 2300 Edison Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the R7 zoning district to the C1 zoning district. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18-0185, Nonowner Occupied Dwelling Units, Rooming Houses and Vacant Structures, Rental Dwellings, Registration and Licensing. For the purpose of adding certain nonowner occupied 1 and 2 family dwellings to the licensing, inspection, and related requirements for multifamily dwellings and rooming houses, collectively rental dwellings modifying the procedures and prerequisites for the registration of certain nonowner occupied dwellings, rooming houses and vacant structures, modifying the procedures and prerequisites for the licensing of rental dwellings providing for the denial, suspension, revocation of a rental dwelling license under certain circumstances, providing for judicial and appellate review of administrative decisions relating to the registration or the licensing of these structures, amending the underlying definition of rooming house to clarify its applicability to a bed and breakfast facility, defining and redefining certain other terms, imposing certain penalties, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related language, providing certain transition rules for pre-existing licenses, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the registration of nonowner occupied dwellings, rooming houses, and vacant structures, and the licensing of rental dwellings.
Chair of the House, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, there are two amendments on your desks which were agreed to by the sponsor of the bill and the Department of Housing and Community Development. Mr. President, at this time, I move the floor amendments.
Second by Councilman Henry. All in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the amendment is adopted. Chair of the House, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rule 12-3B to advance the bill to final passage.
Second by Councilman Henry. All in favor of suspending the appropriate rules, move this bill to third reader, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The bill will be voted on.
President Young?
No.
President Young, no. Councilman Cohen? Councilman Cohen, no. Councilman Scott? Councilman Scott, yes. President Young?
No. I want to explain why my vote is a no. The Housing Authority of Baltimore City have some of the worst properties around, and they are not included in this bill. Therefore, I can't support a bill that does not include the Housing Authority of Baltimore's properties as well as everybody else's properties.
Councilman Cohen? Councilman Scott? Councilman Dorsey? Councilman Henry? Councilman Schleifer?
Chair of the House, Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo your sentiments. I mentioned last time it came up, and also at the hearing, also at the hearing, I mentioned the exact same thing. I think that this bill does have some good merits to it, and I do, in general, like the bill. However, I do agree with you that the housing, and some of the public housing is some of the worst housing in the city. I get calls about that all the time, and I think that we need to practice what we preach and lead by example, and so I'll also be a no.
Councilwoman Middleton? Councilman Pinkett?
Chair of the House, Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While I agree that the Housing Authority needs to be held accountable for the properties that we have stores ship over as the city, I don't think that I can allow that to prevent me from moving forward with supporting this legislation while we deal with these properties, and then that doesn't preclude us from dealing with the Housing Authority properties at a later date. So I vote yes.
Councilman Burnett? Councilman Bullock? Councilman Reisinger? Councilman Costello?
Chair of the House, Councilman Costello.
Councilman Stokes? Councilwoman Snead? Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
We got to count out the votes. We got to count out the votes. This bill is approved. It was 10 yeses, I mean 11 yeses, and four nos. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18-0195, Pace Loan Program Corrective, for the purpose of clarifying the description of priorities to which surcharge payments received under the Pace Loan Program must be credited. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair of the House, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will be holding a hearing on Wednesday, May 16th, at 5:00 p.m. This will be televised. It will be on Bill 18-0076R, an investigative hearing on the physical status of the municipal conduit system at the request of President Young. I'd like to remind our colleagues that Council President has introduced two other bills related to conduit broadband and net neutrality. We will be holding three separate hearings for these bills. This will be a first in a series of hearings on this issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, May 2nd, 2018, beginning at 10:00 a.m. to view the following nominations. Employee Retirement Systems, John Beasley, and the Community Relations Commission will be naming Finnegan Carr. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Chairman Ross Singer.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 17-0119 on Wednesday, May 9th, at 1:05 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a, this is a RPP Area 9 located in Federal Hill, excepted for 819 and 821 Light Street. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 17-0164 on Wednesday, May 16th, at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is zoning. It's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district with variances located at 2240 East Baltimore Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more committee announcement? Chair of the House, Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on Tuesday, May 8th, at 2:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, the Public Safety Committee will host a legislative oversight or the first quarterly report from the Police Department on crime reduction in the city of Baltimore. Also, on Tuesday, May 8th, at 4:00 p.m., we will hold a hearing for Council Resolution 18-0070R at the request of Councilman Schleifer, Resolution Information Hearing, Crisis Preparation and Safety in Our Schools. And on Tuesday, May 15th, at 10:00 a.m., we will hold a hearing for Council Bill 18-0204, An Ordnance Dangerous Knives Commercial Display to Miners at the request of Council Vice President Middleton.
Committee announcement. Chair of the House, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear six bills. The first one is 18-0193, Thursday, May 17th, at 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers. It's the Food Desert Incentive Areas Expenditure Requirements for Tax Credit. We will also hear on Thursday, May 17th, 2018, City Council Bill 18-0208 at 10:05 a.m. here in council chambers, is the sale of property, former bed of Eastbourne Avenue and 10-Foot The next bill on Thursday, May 17th, is City Council Bill 18-0211 at 10:10 a.m. here in council chambers. It's a bond issue, affordable housing loan. And also, we'll hear City Council Bill 18-0212 at 10:15 a.m. here in council chambers, and it's another bond bill for a school loan. We will also hear City Council Bill 18-0213 at 10:20 a.m. here in council chambers, a bond bill, community and economic development loan. And we will also hear City Council Bill 18-0214 at 10:25 a.m., a bond bill, recreation parks and public facilities loan.
Okay. Any more committee announcement? Chair of the House, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This isn't a formal announcement, but more of a placeholder. Budget and Appropriations Committee will be having our City Council Taxpayer Night on Thursday, May 17th, at 5:00 p.m., and then we'll be having budget hearings the week of Tuesday, May 30th through, or Tuesday, May 29th, pardon me, through Friday, June 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and those hearings will be all televised on Charm TV. Thank you.
Thank you. We have regular announcements. I want to say happy birthday to Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer. His birthday is April the 17th. Happy birthday. Regular announcements. Chair of the House, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize to anyone if they've heard me tell this before. About a week or so after our first daughter was born, I walked into the nursery late at night, and my wife was sitting there in the dark, rocking the baby. And I said, I said, "Do you know what today is?" And she just looked at me. And I said, "In a year and a half, we will have been married for 10 years." And she just kept rocking. And then she said, "Let's get to nine." So I'm telling you that story because next April, we will have been married for 25 years. And, and as of about 11 o'clock this morning, we had gotten to 24. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank my wife for the fact that she has kept me sane and grounded for the almost quarter of a century that I've been working in and out of this building. And without her, there is no way I could come in here every morning. So, thank you.
Chair of the House, Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will not be rising to announce any anniversaries for myself, but I would just like to ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor a moment of silence for the now 76 victims of homicide in the city of Baltimore, and all of those that we lost to overdose, an overdose crisis here in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Since the last city council meeting, for the second year in a row, one of the third district's residents has been recognized as a Guggenheim Fellow. So I want to acknowledge, as we did last year, for Deborah Rudisill, a nonfiction writer who's a lifelong Baltimore City resident... uh, nonfiction writer who's a lifelong Baltimore City resident, and, um, Paul Rucker, um, this year Makita Ahuja, an incredible, incredible painter, resident of the Arcadia neighborhood, um, was named a Guggenheim Fellow, uh, the second black artist in Baltimore year and i- i- in Baltimore in consecutive years to be named Guggenheim Fellows. Um, and, and as I, um, her work is extremely, um, self-reflective and reflective in hi- in a historical context, um, on painting, uh, much like the work of her, um, her teacher Kerry James Marshall, who is probably the greatest living artist, um, an incredible painter who is redefining and really, in a way, defining for the very first time, uh, the place of the black body and the black figure in, uh, the traditional Western art world um, in a way unlike anybody else in history. Um, and she continues that legacy and i- in, in using herself as her subject in her work, um, a- as a black and East Indian, uh, woman. And, um, and I, I really value that introspective, uh, character of her work and, uh, and it, it shows in everything that she says and I think that it relates to why I stand here, meeting after meeting, and say the arts are important and these are the things that are happening in the arts. And she exemplifies that all the time, including in the article from the Baltimore Sun that just came out today where she says, "As artists, we learn to work when money, when validation, external validation, when kind of status is in short supply. We always find ways to make our work, but it is incredibly encouraging to be recognized and to get that external recognition. It gives me more faith in myself, more faith that my chosen path is worthy." So, I appreciate you all letting me continue to share about arts here, meeting after meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognize Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Um, I do want to thank everyone for voting for our College Bound Resolution. And it is the kickoff, really, of a campaign. In our school system for thirty years, we have benefited because then Mayor Kurt Schmoke, the build organization, and the Greater Baltimore Committee came together and said that we need to not only help our students in the public school system, uh, get into college. To do so, we got to start back in ninth grade so that the families and the students and the neighborhoods know what college is and what the opportunities are. And so College Bound was formed and now it serves in eighteen of our Baltimore City high schools, Baltimore City Public Schools. We need to expand it to all of our high schools. We need to begin by expanding it to thirty-three out of, of our high schools. So, fifteen more. And so we're beginning a campaign and i- it, we're going everywhere to ask for contributions. The City of Baltimore, the State of Maryland. We won't go to Trumpville till he leaves. Uh, we got a lot of other places to go. To the private sector, to foundations because it works, because the mayor of the City of Baltimore has opened the floodgates of college prep in our public school system by saying, "You graduate, you have free tuition for an associate's degree at Baltimore City, Triple C, Baltimore City Community College." And that, yeah, you can clap for that. The whole city's clapping for that and also copping within a week. Came forward and said, "Okay, you do that, you get that degree. We'll give you the next two years to get your bachelor's degree free." All right. So if I'm a kid and I don't even know, I've never heard about college re- as part of my life, um, what do I do about that? Maybe nothing. We have counselors in our high schools and they work like dogs. Some of them have five hundred students on their personal list to get to help and to work with through school. College Bound counselors are full-time or at smaller schools halftime, only about getting, working with the students, helping them know that what college is, how to get in, what courses to take, how it works, and that they have an opportunity. And so, thank you for helping us kick off this campaign. I'm even at the Board of Estimates, Mr. President, this Wednesday, asking for the board's permission to help raise funds. I hope the board will look on, upon my participation favorably. And I thank everyone because we're going to drive you crazy raising this money. It's one point three million dollars. Now, the school system already contributes a million a year through s- s- for, through fair student funding. And the private sector, three million a year for not just scholarships, not just grants for the, the, our students going on to college, but also for all those fees that drive families crazy to take the college, to take the S A Ts, to send an admission request into a college. All those fees, they help pay that too. So, this is not a paid commercial, Mr. President and members. It's a, uh, teachers' and a mothers' and a bobbies' commercial that I want all of our kids to take advantage of the opportunities that have been made available to us and that shame on us if we don't find the way that every child can take advantage. So, thank you. And one other thing as a P S note bene, note bene, as they used to say in school. I had no idea, different subject, that there was so much enthusiasm for covering, uh, the housing, the hu- H A B C scattered site housing. I promised Mr. Ron Miles that I would introduce legislation in like a year or so, but I'm not going to wait. I'm very excited and once this bill gets signed into law, I may just rush this amendment in and a- as a new piece of legislation. So, thanks. Who knew?
Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, April twenty-third, twenty eighteen. And I'd like to request a moment of silence for the continu- the continued opioid death epidemic and also for the, um, families of the seventy-six deaths that we have so far this year.
Thank you. There be no further, further business. This concludes the thirty-first meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.